The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education Work Session. We are joined at the table by six board members. Our superintendent, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our Board Executive Assistant, Sandra Heller, Grace Sinclair, who is the President of the Inter-City Student Council, and several of our administrators are here. We begin each work session with an open forum. And I believe we have at least one person who is interested. If you could come forward, Heather Piantic. And if we could, if you could keep your comments to three minutes and bear in mind that it's an opportunity for you to tell us what you want us to hear, but we don't engage in discussion. We may ask clarifying questions, but, and if you have anything in writing that you'd like to leave with Sandy, she can get us copies. Please do, and state your name and address.
My name is Heather Piantic. My address is 3013 Brighton Place in Green Bay, ZIP Code 54311. Good evening, school board members. Thank you for all your great work that you do for our school district. Your time and your efforts are appreciated. My name is Heather Piantic, and I have two sons in the Green Bay schools. My older son is 12 years old and in 7th grade at Edison Middle School. The ideal number of students for this space is 1,137 students. Right now, there are 1,260 students at Edison. This is about 123 students beyond capacity. That's a lot. Around my neighborhood in Bellevue, there are lots for sale and more houses are being built. More and more apartment buildings are going up by the East Side YMCA. This all feeds into Edison Middle School. I would like to advocate to you, our school board, in making class sizes a priority. On February, on Friday, October 21st, my son and I met with all of his eight Edison Middle School teachers during parent-teacher conferences. I felt that all of his teachers are working hard and that my son is getting a good education at Edison. However, I am concerned that my son is in some classes of over 30 students and that there are overcrowding concerns at Edison. The lower number of students in a class, the more time the teacher can have for each child. While other factors may be beyond control for a school district, class sizes is a factor that can hopefully be controlled. I am hopeful that a policy can be established regarding class sizes. I would suggest a limit of 27 students per class. Thank you for your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Sure, that would be great. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we will move forward. And we will begin with the Teaching and Learning Work Session that will be facilitated by Ed Dorff.
Thank you. We have one discussion item, Academic Career Planning Update. I'll turn it over to Kim Paulo to introduce the folks who are going to give us a presentation.
Great, thank you. You guys want to come on up to the table? Grab a seat, any seat. Except the hot one. So tonight, we would just like to provide you with somewhat of a brief overview of academic and career planning, which will, as you may know, is required by state legislation that in the 17, 18 school year, we will need to start making sure that we are doing academic and career planning as a district, and it's a state requirement. The good news is, is that we're already doing a lot of really great things regarding academic and career plans, and you're going to hear a little bit about that tonight. But we need to come back to you later in spring to prepare, to share with you a full, long, and short-range plan that you are going to need to approve as a board. So we thought it would be good to give you a little foundation tonight, give you some information, so that when we do come back with that plan, you kind of know why we're doing it, where we're headed, and the process that's taking place ahead of time. So just laying a little groundwork tonight, okay? Brooke, do you want to introduce your teammates and yourself to the board?
Absolutely. My name is Brooke Mueller. I'm the Coordinator of College Career and Community Readiness for the district. I started in August, so this is my first year in the position. This is Heather Zelzer. She is a middle school counselor at Franklin Middle School. This is Kristy Davis. She's a high school counselor at Preble Middle School. And this is Seth Minal. He is an associate principal at Preble.
Good evening.
So we have a PowerPoint for you that Brooke will kind of walk through, and then we'll save some times at the end for questions.
Thanks, Kim. As Kim mentioned, I'm really going to be going over what is academic and career planning as it's laid out by the state. Some of my topics for today, besides the overview, is really digging a little bit deeper into why it's important. Beyond the legislative piece, how does it connect with our district priorities? And then, you know, why, why is it important for our students and for our district overall? Clarification on what it is versus what is not. Sometimes I think that the best way to really understand something is to understand what maybe we're shifting away from a little bit more, or what something isn't. Some of the benefits of the process, as outlined by and researched through the Department of Public Instruction and the Academic and Career Planning Guide that was, that was posted actually at the beginning of November, so an updated recent guide that they have put out there. And then what are we doing and who is involved? And then what will we bring back in the, in the spring? And Kim Paulo had alluded to some of those pieces with the long-range plan. Oh, there we go, okay. So what is academic and career planning? On the PowerPoint, I have posted the Department of Public Instruction's definition of academic and career planning. I'm not going to read the entire definition, but I do want to highlight the, the words that I have underlined, that academic and career planning at the heart of it is really that a student-driven, adult-supported process. And so it's student-driven, and what I mean by that is students own the process, and students are the ones that are controlling what goes into the plan. But it's adult-supported in the, in the way that it's not students on their own. It's not, you know, we go into the classroom, we do it once, and then students, it's up to them to, you know, to put anything in if they do, or if they don't. It's supported by their parents, it's supported by teachers, it's supported by counselors, it's, it's owned by everybody. So what's the purpose? The purpose is to shift away from random acts of career development towards a holistic and student-centered approach. So in the, in the past, and typically, the burden of this responsibility has rested on the, on school counselors. Being that school counselors are well-versed in the, the career domains, that aspect makes sense, but we're really trying to expand that, that career development and that, the career planning and management to, to the entire school and the entire district focus, and really infusing that throughout students' learning. And helping students and families become more informed consumers of education and training required to meet the students' personal goals. So reflecting on our own academic and career journeys to support students on theirs. I think that sometimes when we reflect on what were, what was our process like? What were some of the obstacles and roadblocks that we faced when we were going through our academic and career journey? I know from the ones I have listed up there, the one that was really highlighted for me was that lack of direction and uncertainty, that idea that I could do anything, so how can I possibly choose what, what the right path is? How can I possibly make that decision? And connecting that to our families and what some of their obstacles and roadblocks are, those financial barriers. We, we only know what we know. And so who are those, the, who are students leaning on for advice? They're leaning on us, they're leaning on educators, they're, they're listening, and they're taking that feedback from teachers and from counselors to help them connect their personal goals to the careers and to more than just the, you know, the, the standard careers that we think about, but really giving them a perspective and helping that, them connect that to their, to their goals. The DPI has put out these four, these four key pieces to an academic and career plan that if they go through these, this process, that students should graduate with the knowledge, skills, and habits to be college, career, and community ready. And so I, I, one piece I just want to emphasize with is that these don't have to be gone through in any linear order, is that they might go through this process and revisit that reflecting stage and, and that intention that yearly they are creating and reflecting, reviewing, and revising those goals, and creating that plan, an intentional plan that aligns to those, those personal goals. So what is it and what is it not? I mentioned at the beginning that sometimes the best way to understand something is to hear a little bit more about what it is not. And so it isn't a plan developed by adults for students. It is supported by adults, and it, and emphasis on that collaborative process in which students are working with their, with their parents and working with their teachers and counselors to create this plan that aligns to their pathway. It is a process and it is a product, but an emphasis on that students are going through this process, starting in 6th grade and ultimately when they, when they enter the edu, when they enter their educational endeavors. It's supported by meaningful interactions, and it's going away from an activity to check off the done box to a more sequential and process-oriented. And just to mention, it's not a means of, of tracking students. I think sometimes with academic and career planning, there's that confusion as to what's different from academic and career planning and tracking students. And I think the biggest piece with that is that students are encouraged yearly to review and revise their goals. And yes, students are encouraged to, to choose a pathway that aligns, but they're also encouraged to re-navigate and redirect as it, as it fits and aligns with their goals. So why academic and career planning? This is the Wisconsin statute that was created to ensure that every school board is providing academic and career planning services to pupils enrolled in grades 6 through 12 in the district, beginning in the 2017, 2018 school year. It aligns to our district priorities, and I've highlighted under our district priority of personalized pathways, the high-leverage action to establish an academic and career plan for every middle and high school student that outlines a clear, personalized path to graduation with checkpoints along the way. And just one more note on the, the Wisconsin State statute is that that statute is found within the Public Instruction Administrative Rule 26. And so rather than, and that's along with the Education for Employment. So rather than creating an entirely different rule for the statute, they fit academic and career planning within that, within that rule. So I just wanted to highlight the Department of Public, Public Instruction's timeline, that right now, we're really in that early implementation year, and, and just setting that plan and setting the groundwork. 2017, 18 is when that implementation goes into place and when that legislative piece goes into place. And beyond that is just about that evaluative piece and monitoring the progress. Some of the benefits of academic and career planning, and these were taken from the ACP Guide that you can find on the Department of Public Instruction's website, that it improves motivation and awareness of post-secondary options and planning, increases family engagement because families are a part of this process on a yearly basis. And so it's, it's required through the academic and career planning process. And then increases engagement because it's really connecting students with how their goals align to, to careers and how they align throughout the curriculum. So what are we already doing? I wanted to highlight just a few of these pieces under what are we already doing. One of them are the individual planning conferences. And those occur right now in grades 8, 9, and 11 with all students. And those are done through our Student Services Department with, with the student and with a parent. And so a part of those individual planning conferences, and I know the, the counselors here, if you have questions, can speak, speak more to those, to those, are that they, they're really about engaging students, and they're about looking at the career cruising work that the students have done. And I'll speak a little bit about career cruising as well, because it has been a tool that's been adopted by the state of Wisconsin for academic and career planning. And so the state has been required to, to adopt a software tool, and that's the one they've chosen. For us, we've been using it for years, and so it's something that our students and, and many of our, our school educators are already very familiar with. Another piece that is good to know is the ease of access with career cruising at this point, that there is a, a one sign-on that students, it's communicating with Infinite Campus, and so students can go into their launch pad, click on the career cruising icon, and automatically get into their system. There's also daily data transfers from Infinite Campus to career cruising, and so as students are, new students are registering or transience or moving from school to school, that will automatically be, you know, reflected within the career cruising system.
So Infinite Campus, or maybe Julie, for your, your sake, as a newer board member, is our student management system that we use across the entire district. So we don't have to have two platforms, everything works in one.
And they start that in grade 6, and they, and that follows them all the way through grade 12 right now. And then the Finder Inspiration Event is put on by the Chamber of Commerce, and this year, all of our 8th grade students attended the Finder Inspiration Event at the KI Center, which was a, a great career exploration opportunity for our students. And the counselors and, and teachers did a great job of infusing those pieces back into the, into the classrooms. So who is involved? This process was started last year within our district. Angela Buckenhour was in my, my position. She started a lot of the work in getting some of those teams together and laying some of that initial groundwork. This year, we have, we're continuing to build on those teams. In the, in the board reports, you'll see the team members that have been involved to this point. Upcoming involvement is, as mentioned in the report as well, is that growing and expanding of those teams and really looking at building those school-level teams, as well as the advisory council, to get the support and input from parents and students, business, and post-secondary. So our next steps and considerations, we're moving forward and really outlining, outlining a clear plan. And when I say phase one, I'm talking about from now until the start of the 2017, 2018 school year, when that legislative piece goes into place. Identifying gaps in service and prioritizing goals, focusing on alignment versus rollout. So not trying to put this out as this is a completely new thing, because it's not. There's already a lot of this going on within our schools, and it's about tying, tying it together. Starting small and moving slowly and intentionally, continuing to create a common understanding, helping people understand the why and creating a common language in our district. And then defining the roles and responsibility at the district and school levels as we, as we navigate this process. What will we bring back in the spring? We'll bring back the long-range plan that's connected to the PI 26 Administrative Rule. We will, just a, a note to the board that that is to be posted on the district website once it's approved, and it's considered an actionable plan that will be reviewed annually. ACP components will be laid out in, in the phases, and, and that's the note to the board, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's no budget or governance requests at this time, because you are bringing this back to us in the spring, but do any of the board members have questions? Mike?
A couple of questions, thanks, Seth. I know all of our counselors have huge workloads and lots of students that are held accountable for. How do our counselors ensure parent involvement? I know a lot of parents aren't available during the school day. Sometimes a counselor may have to meet with different groups of parents in the same family if there's a divorce or custody problems. How do we ensure that parent involvement?
I would say the, the big piece when we're moving towards academic and career planning is taking the burden of responsibility off the counselors, because that is very difficult with the counselors' caseload being, you know, one, two, you know, over 300 students to be expected to, to be making all of those connections. And that's why, you know, we're looking in, with academic and career planning, on how can teachers and how can educators be those, also be the mentors and advisors, knowing that counselors are experts in those areas and are going to continue to be an integral, integral part of the process.
I would also say, Mike, in answer to your question, we are currently already doing this for those grades. So maybe Kristy or Heather, you want to just give them a little information on what you're already doing to engage parents, because through the academic career planning that we have, we are getting them in with a pretty high success rate, I believe, so.
Yeah, for our 9th graders, we have a lot of evening events, so we'll have stuff in the evening several times. We'll host it on parent-teacher conference nights and have about three sessions. Outside of even parent-teacher conference nights, our counselor that's responsible for the 9th graders, as well as our Spanish-speaking counselor, then we have a Monge presentation, all set up several evening presentations. I think our 9th grade one, we've already had nine different offerings in evening hours or late afternoon hours for families. And then in regards to our junior conferences that are done individually, a lot of that were flexible as far as with the parents, if they have to come in later. But I would say last year, I think most of us had those completed around 85% with parent or guardian.
For the middle school, we-
Heather, would you grab the mic and-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. For the middle school, we did the same thing. We offer night and during the day. So during parent-teacher conferences, and we let the 8th grade teachers know so they can encourage parents, if they didn't set up a time, just to come. We also then had the interpreter nights, so we had a Spanish-speaking session and a Monge speaking session. We also do the robo-call, and we send a, a letter, and then after they're all done, for any parents that still didn't come, we still meet with the student. And we also send a letter and the packet of information home with the student to let the parents know if they still have any further questions. Sometimes it might be the parent stopping in for a different reason, and we're able to snag them quickly to ask them if they have any questions for that.
Okay. Can I add a second question? And this might be more for you, Kim. Have we ever done or considered doing a post-graduation survey of students to see if they thought the counseling they got was sufficient for what they ended up doing or wanting to do with their, rest of their lives?
I don't think we've done that survey specifically on this topic. I think we do try to do the post-secondary surveys around where are you and what are you doing? But, I mean, I think that's a good question. I think, you know, we would have to think about how we could, what vehicle would we use to get that done? But I would hope if we were doing a good job of evaluating the long-range plan, we would have some feedback loop built into that plan. So, and I, and I think both of your questions, Mike, are really important, because they're all of the things that we have to grapple with as we figure out how to roll this out with twice as many kids as we've been doing it with before. So that's, that's what part of the planning is, and that's obviously what the committees are really trying to figure out, and then what is that evaluation process so we get feedback and do it well?
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. I'm glad you pointed out that many of these things have been and are being done. I don't want our public to think that we haven't been involved with our students in this area. A concern I have, and I'm not expecting a response now, but something for you to think about perhaps for your return engagement. I appreciate that our counselors are busy. I know we don't have as many as we might like. But our teachers are also extremely busy, and I'm really not interested in seeing duties being pushed over to them when they already have a full plate. So, you know, to, to me, you can't keep loading things on somebody's plate without taking something off, and I hope that's taken into account. The second and last comment I have, I understand that we have communication with parents. My bias is that parents should have a responsibility, that there's something they should be doing in this process, so I hope you'll take that into account also.
And again, I think that, that's part of what we're trying to figure out as well is, you know, how do we get this done in the magnitude that it needs to get done with, with a limited staff of counselors, social workers, and all, all those that we would naturally assume? And where are we already doing things that have parents engaged, that we could just put this in as part of what's already happening and then try to make sure that they're engaged? So I, those are really good points. The, the problem is, is we have to try to figure out, because it says it needs to be done with an adult, and it should involve the community. So we have to, we're going to have to figure out what that means capacity-wise, which is why I think if you look at the makeup of those committees, why we have so many people on those committees? Because we're trying to get feedback from all of those other places on how, how can this look and what will it look like? So there's, those are large teachers, counselors, administrators, they're all on those committees.
One of the things that I think is important that I hear when I'm out and about, a Chi Brown County, the Chamber and so forth, our community is very interested and knows a lot about this opportunity. And I think that if, and we've been doing some legwork behind the scenes, I know that a lot of people have been out talking with the community to provide equity and access to different experiences that maybe some students will have just by nature of their own life and circumstance, but others might not. And that's why when you think about the, the opportunity that you talked about with 8th graders all being in a huge space with extraordinary community partners coming to the table, you know, I think part of what I'm hoping will happen is that through the different community partnerships, we'll have additional resource that can support this effort so it's robust, you know? Because again, when you speak about what's on people's plates right now, it has to be, I think, a very collective effort. And I believe our, our community is up for the opportunity because they see the value in investing in students and that in the, it'll, it'll bode well for the future for all of us. So, and I'm sure some of you, you're nodding your head, so you must have had some conversations well beyond me, so.
I was just going to emphasize that piece of that intentional, that intentional process that we have so many community partners and so many business partners and so many things that are going on by and for our students and to provide those supports. And so this process I see as really a way to be more intentional and really connect students to the right, to the right resources and to the best resources for them. And with that, we have, we have a great community for that, because they are, we hear about it so often that they're ready to go, that they want to support us.
Grace, if you don't mind, I'm going to put the spotlight on you. Could you share with us your counseling history, pluses, minuses, suggestions for, for how our district can improve what we're doing? You've been through it all?
Yes, so I am a junior this year, so I have my IPC coming up, which is your Independent Planning Conference. So I haven't gone to mine yet, but I know some of my friends have gone to theirs. And that's basically just talking about like your career path and where you want to go and like where you want to go to college, or if you want to go to college, or like if you want to go into the workforce. And I don't, I have, like I said, I haven't had mine yet, but I do remember, like I have had career cruising all throughout high school, and I do remember like just this year, our, all of our math teachers had like a, some like conference, so all of our math teachers were in the library for a day. So the counselors all came into our math classes, and they all worked with us on career cruising, and they worked with us on, on our profiles. On your profile, you have like a resume, so you can fill out like all your extracurriculars and your clubs and your volunteer hours and stuff like that. And it's really good to like keep track of all of your stuff on there, but like it formats the resume kind of weird, but it's like good to keep track of it on there. But, but like, so I've had good experiences with that, and both of my brother and- there. But, but like, so I've had good experiences with that. And both of my brother and sister have gone through the planning conferences. And I think, well, I don't think my sister planned on going into the Army when she was going into hers. So I think her IPC kind of like was thrown off. But my brother's, he, I think, is where he had never really heard of the college he had planned on going to. But when he went into his IPC, they looked at all the UW schools. And I think that's when he kind of decided that he wanted to tour the school that he's now going to. So I think that it's really important, and I think that it does really help students.
Any questions? Would you give us just a, Grace kinda touched on it and gave us about, probably about eighty percent of a definition of, of career cruising. Would you fill in the rest of it? What, what is career cruising beyond a resume builder?
Sure. Career cruising, as I mentioned, the state of Wisconsin was required to adopt a tool for academic and career planning. And career cruising was the, the tool that, that our state adopted. And so career cruising is a, a learning platform for students. Within it, they are able to create their own profile. They're able to take interest inventories, career inventories, skills, ability profilers. It will capture goals, reflections. They're able to upload documents. Teachers are able to, and counselors are able to communicate and send messages through, through career cruising to students, able to add to calendars. They're able to, they're able to research careers and educational institutions, are able to find whether or not they match. There's, I mean, you can go on and on about what the career cruising platform, platform is. What we're looking at moving forward is how, what do we want moving forward to be captured within career cruising for students' plans? Because it can really be, be what we make of it moving forward. And, and counselors have done a lot with that. And I don't know if you would like to add?
No, just like Brooke said, using a lot, like when we went in with the juniors, a lot of starting with the career interest inventory, making sure they had some career interests, saving three to five careers that they'd be interested in to hopefully expand out to increase job shadows, bringing in guest speakers in regards to their careers. From careers, then they can research colleges that offer that career as a major. So from there, they can go into each of the college profiles and each college view admissions requirements, other majors offered, financial aid. So it kind of links each of the careers to the universities that offer that, and what level of degree you would need on the careers. There's videos. They can interview, they can do live job searches. There's a financial aid component where they can do a financial aid selector. It has a scholarship, scholarship database built into it. So there's, there's a lot that's entailed within it.
And are all students accessing this in a structured format? Or is it optional at this point? And then what's happening in the future with that?
I can speak for middle school. Right now, it's in a structured format. So the counselors, we have different lessons that we go in. And for sixth grade, we might do like a My Learning Styles inventory and teach them how they should be finding out how they learn best and talking with teachers about that and self-advocating for themselves. In seventh grade, they might do the matchmaker. And then again, in eighth grade. So it is structured. But then we also share with them and with their teachers, now use it, however. So in eighth grade, they do a career research paper. So we said, use career cruising. It's a great resource to use. So it is structured in some sense for some places, but they can also go and use it whenever they'd like then.
And that's similar at the high school. Most of it's driven by the counselors with doing lessons. But with all the other things, like we've kind of stated, it's limited with the amount of times that we're in the classrooms with the kids to have that. I know through our personal financial literacy class, the teachers utilize it as a tool for a lot of career research, the resume building. So most of ours we see is when the counselors are in the classroom, which is limited use.
And then one final question I have, kind of reflects back on, on what Mr. Block had asked before. Do parents receive any, any reporting on what, what the kids are finding when they go through the career cruising programs?
So in sixth grade, in middle school, at their eighth grade planning conference, that is something that we have set up with the parents so that the student is showing. It's really, this year, we especially tried to make it a student-led conference where the student was saying, hey, here's what I did, and here's what I found out, this is what I like to do, here's where I can go to school to do that. And just starting to look at those things. I'm sure at the high school level, it probably gets even bigger than that. But they do start to look at it. Like Mr. Black pointed out, getting every parent there to see that that is a resource is something that we need to look further into and delve into. My hope is though, that if it's student-driven, gosh, those kids are going home and saying, Mom and Dad, this is what I want to do. And if they're engaged, then, you know, they're, because it's individualized, it's for that one kid. And each kid is different. So good stuff to look forward to.
Ours is reviewed with parents in the ninth grade and the eleventh grade individual planning conferences. We have that up and we review what the students have done and show the parents even how to use that as a tool and as a resource as well, what's built into it.
And it's a great resource too. I'm somewhat familiar with it. So, thank you very much. Interesting report. Look forward to seeing what you've got for us coming in the spring.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all we have for teaching and learning work session today.
Organizational support work session, that's gonna be facilitated by Dr. Chris Wagner.
Thank you. Tonight, we've been waiting for, for a little while with high anticipation. We're going to have the Facilities Task Force report. A lot of work has been done towards that end, as you all know. And we're anxious to hear the results. So Mr. Sarno, you're gonna lead it?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Sure. Sounds good.
Wanted to take an opportunity this evening to present a capstone piece of taking a look at our facilities and some, even some of the programs that we offer. This evening, we have Joe Donovan from the Donovan Group, who's helped us facilitate the Facilities Task Force. So we did assemble over the month of October, a group during four evenings throughout the month, took a look at what some of the board's tasks were for this group, what their thoughts were. We've presented it in a document, and we'd like to have an opportunity to present that this evening. Also joining us, Tim and Ann, co-chairs of the Facilities Task Force. And I wanted to say before I forgot, before I forget, the amount of time and effort, not just by the two of you, but by all the task force, as well the other district staff that were a part of that. It was a very engaging process, and I'm very thankful for the time and the opportunity to have that. So thank you very much, and I do appreciate it.
Andy, could you have the other task force member at least stand?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you all.
I would like to echo Andy's comments. You gave a tremendous amount of time, a tremendous amount of talent. And on behalf of the board, the district, and most importantly, the children, we really appreciate the input that you are providing us as we go down this road. Thank you.
Would like to present some information. Then at some point, then if other task force members do have anything to share, then at an appropriate point, that we could invite them up and have them share as well. So.
Great. Joel?
Great. Hello, everyone, and thanks again for the opportunity to be with you. As, as Mr. Sarno mentioned, my name is Joe Donovan, and through my firm, the Donovan Group, I assisted the task force in its work. Board members, as you'll recall, in an effort to assist the school board in developing solutions to numerous facility issues in the district, the board created a citizen-led task force. The specific purpose of the task force was to consider the needs of the district as well as notes gathered at the community engagement sessions that were held in September, as well as information from the district's architect, the district's administration, and the recently conducted survey. And to create a set of solutions that is presented to you in a formal report. Tonight, the task force will submit that report. In a moment, I'll introduce task force chairs, Ann Van Ness and Tim Weinberg. But before I do, I'd like to explain the process that was used by the task force. The process began with the school board selecting a group of people to participate on the task force. Invitations were extended far and wide across the district, and ultimately thirty people, community leaders, all participated in a total of five task force meetings. Next, the board developed a formal charge for the task force. And that charge outlined the parameters for the work of the task force and was used extensively throughout the task force process. Now, before proceeding, I did want to say and make note that the work of the task force and the evidence was, that was used in the task force meeting, plus minutes and agendas, were posted on the district website. And truly, a central tenet of this work was that the work of this task force was to be done in a very transparent way. As for roles, like other community members, board members, you were invited to participate and, but you were, you were asked not to speak at the meetings. And I want to thank you for the time that you spent in the meetings. District-level staff were in attendance, but where there is resources. And district staff were not on the task force themselves in order that they vote. As for my role, I assisted with the process. I helped define the work of the task force, and I wrote the first drafts of the report that you have before you. But it should be noted that I wasn't a member of the committee. I didn't vote. Moreover, my fees were paid directly by the school district. I'm a neutral third party. I don't have children in the district, and I don't pay taxes here. The committee met for the first time on October 6th at Chapel Elementary School and met for a total of four times between early October and our last meeting last week. And again, a tremendous amount of work was done. During the task force first meeting, members reviewed the charge from the board, made introduction, discussed norms for how they would do their work, reviewed roles, and discussed next steps, and briefly discussed at a high level some of the needs of the district. During the second meeting, a deep dive into the needs of the district was done. And task force members had an opportunity to ask questions of each other, as well as to district staff and the district's architect. During the third meeting, based on initial request of the task force, a series of solutions were presented by the district's architect to the task force member, members. And care was taken to ensure that the solutions really were consistent with the charge that you made to the task force. Between the third and the fourth meeting, a draft of the task force report, the first draft of the report that you have before you, was presented. During the fourth meeting, task force members continued to fine-tune their proposed solutions and to discuss options. Then, between the third, between the fourth meeting and the fifth meeting, as you know, a community, a community survey was done. At the fifth meeting, which was held just last week, task force members considered the results of that survey and continued to fine-tune their solutions in light of those results, and ultimately voted on the solutions included in this report. As you know, and as was just noted, a tremendous amount of work was done by task force members, including many hours of deliberations at this table and tables across the district, and many more hours members put into reading and, and thinking about considering various needs of the district and possible solutions. This was a truly outstanding group. And so I want to thank the board for the opportunity to work with the school district. I want to thank the task force members, including our co-chairs, with whom I worked very closely during this process, and the other members. Again, truly outstanding group. So with that, I'd like to turn things over to Tim Weinberg, who will review the recommendations of the task force.
Good. Thank you, Joel. Good evening, everyone. You don't get twenty-nine or thirty strong-willed people in a room and not have a whole lot of fun dealing with all of the deliberations, as Joe calls them. The, and I want to thank the task force, put it in the record that the chairs, Ann and myself, thank the task force. They were an energetic group, a thoughtful group, a passionate group. And Ann and I are both still alive, so very respectful as well. So, thank you all. The other two things that I think need reiteration here are, and Joe used one of the words, transparency. This was totally transparent. It was, it was as public as can be. But it was also independent. We operated independently. We had educators on the task force. They were very helpful, kept us going in the right direction. The staff was available to us as needed. But in no way do we feel that we were directed or manipulated in any way. Totally, totally independent. So these are our recommendations. And so, and we thank you for the opportunity to participate in this, this really important work. The themes of our deliberation, I just want to go over a few of those so you get a sense of, if you had been in the room, there would have been a lot of discussion on things like, boy, we can't do this all at once because there's lots to do. So a staged approach, the need for a master plan, a long-range look, and dealing with the short-term issues need to be done, in our opinion, in the context of a longer-term vision for the school district. And we know you have that, and we were offered that kind of information as we went forward. Baird Elementary School, Preble High School, Edison, came up a lot. Because that is where we realize, as you well know, that if you talk about overcrowding in this district, those are the names, those are the facilities that, that come to top of mind. And we'll get into that a little bit more. We talked a lot about moving boundaries and all of the ramifications of even talking about doing that. And we have a recommendation relative to how you might proceed in that regard as well. Commitment to the ideals of equity. And when I get into the specific recommendations, we have an overriding lens that we would recommend that you look at everything you do through. And that has to do with being equitable. I mentioned Preble. We, we might, we must ensure that the learning spaces are flexible. It was a little difficult for us to stay in the context of bricks and mortar. Because bricks and mortar is where the learning takes place and the programming and the excellent staffing. And so we, we talked about other issues, and we'll get into a few of those as well. Because being just in the facility mindset really was difficult, and we thought too limiting relative to the work we were doing. Increase elementary school capacity, big issue, came up a lot. And then transportation, as a part of providing access to all the wonderful things that are going on in this district, that some of our students may not have as ready access to as other students do. Back to the equity and the equitable treatment. A big challenge for you as representatives of this area, but we're recommending you never lose sight of the fact that, that maybe is really what all the citizens are all about. Proposed solutions. With the group, as we went through all of these deliberations, we got into the weeds every once in a while, all right? There were a lot of very passionate people in the room, and, and they had solutions. And sometimes those solutions that they thought and they offered to the, to the task force were, in my words, kind of in the weeds, in the detail. So we tried to pull out of that as much as we could and talk to you, recommend to you what should be done without getting into the how to do it, if that makes sense to you. Because when you get into the how, you get, you get into the detail. So Ann and I were frequently pulling people out of the weeds. Those discussions were very informative. I learned a lot. And I made some new friends on the task force, too. So, the overriding lens, I'm gonna read this to you. It's in your report. "The need for equity across the district should be the lens through which all future facilities-related work in the district takes place. Equitable investments in facilities should be based on the needs of each individual school community. Another common theme is customize the approach to doing education and providing the learning environment to the needs of that particular facility and the population attending." So, all right, core themes. Let's, let's get into the, the heart of it. Overcrowding, address it, number one. Do something about it. Simply stated, the top priority is the need for quality education space for students in the district. And I think at least the task force came to the realization, or was there when we started, that there are some specific overriding needs relative to overcrowding. Provide the right spaces for programming and addressing overcrowding. The board should ensure that all school improvements are based on best practices and the needs of the students attending that school. In other, in other words, a master plan that customizes and addresses each particular- In other words, a master plan that customizes and addresses each particular facility. Now, we're not recommending you do it all at once, all right? It just isn't feasible. And we understood that it's part of your job to take our recommendations and the priorities that we're bringing forward and decide how you're going to go forward. And we were very aware of that. And the third one is do something. And I say that with all due respect, move forward. Move forward with an April referendum. I think the survey showed us that there is significant support, at least in the surveyed community, for action. And so, one of our top three recommendations is move forward with something. And we're giving you the what, you figure out the how. And I'll say this, I was going to say this at the end, but I'll say it now. A lot of people on the task force were wondering what's next for us, if anything, because our work is really done as a task force. But if there's a role that you see for this group of active, concerned, passionate, thoughtful citizens in being supportive in one way or another, either as advocates or however, I think I can speak for most of the people on the task force, we would welcome a chance to continue to help, whatever that might look like. I think I'm the only one who's not a resident of the school district on that task force and I'm even willing to help, so. So, things to do. Specifics. Examine attendance boundaries at all levels and consider making changes to address overcrowding. So, boundary changes are, in our opinion, are not off the table. They're on the table. Excuse me. Address, in other words, I was going to say what it says here, address the needs at Baird Elementary School. On top of the list, of our list, our work list was fix Baird, two words. And we understand as a group, having looked at this in different ways, that that's not an easy task. The facility may not lend itself, as it currently exists, to the future needs of flexible Not our call, but do something about it. Create a new kindergarten through grade eight school on the east side of the district. Consider doing that. Create a new high school on the east side. And we did have a few conversations about the history of, quote, "the fifth high school" in the school district. And I personally happened to have been chairman of the chamber board at the time that we were going through that and we were hosting those hearing sessions. And it was a difficult time for this population here, for this district. And we're suggesting that that history not dissuade you from taking the action you feel is necessary. Ensure the other high schools in the district remain vibrant and flexible with learning spaces and that enrollments in the schools, here it says equal a thousand students, okay? Where did the thousand come from? We kind of pulled it out of the air because Nick, the architect we were working with, said, well, what do you think would be a good number to have as a maximum number for any school, especially any high school? And not being educators and not being the competent people to answer that question, we came up with a thousand. The point is this, think about that and think about limiting the size of the facilities. Now, some of the students who were on the task force, and Grace was one, indicated at one point in time, it's the quality of the learning that's more important than the size of the facility. And we agreed with that. Thank you. You reminded us of that. And yet, size does matter, at least in the opinion of the task force. And we have no specific learned recommendation as to what that should be. Provide every school with community spaces for community partners. Schools, as you well know, are way beyond, go way beyond the kinds of services that were traditionally related to education. I said to Michelle about two years ago, we have asked the schools to do a lot. That is the job of society. And we are hopefully changing that now as a society in terms of wanting to help and community schools and providing access to the kinds of services that are needed for the students, in our opinion, will enhance their learning and improve education. And so, we're encouraging you to do that. Consider down the road, the creation of magnet schools. We had a discussion about what that really meant, what is a magnet school? And I don't know if we came to a conclusion. You probably know that better than we do, but consider that because we think there's value in it. Ensure that educational spaces are the right spaces that are flexible enough to meet the needs that are coming. Ensure that schools are customized to meet the students they serve. Back to the point, of each facility is unique and the educators and some of the more learned people on the task force kept reminding us of that, that all schools aren't the same, all grade schools, all high schools aren't the same because the population in the community that it serves are different. So, have a master plan that customizes what you're going to do at each facility. Again, recommendations. Expand opportunities in existing schools for students in accordance with market trends. We just heard about ACP. We had, Kim did a really nice job educating us on what pathways we're all about. Some of us had no idea what that was, what was going on in our school district in that regard. Good stuff, all right, in our opinion. We also would like to submit a list of things that we would prefer you don't do. Now, you didn't really ask for this, but you're going to get it. I told you we were operating independently and now we're going to prove it to you. Do not expand Preble High School, a recommendation, all right? Don't do it. Some of the opinions on the task force were neutral on that, but the majority were, don't do that. Don't fail to consider an operational referendum. When we were discussing transportation, we were getting into operational issues. Like I said, it was really hard to stay in the facilities, bricks and mortar mindset, and we chose not to do that exclusively. We felt we serve you better by making some recommendations that go beyond just bricks and mortar and facilities. Do not fail to address transportation. Do not create a separate technical high school, yet. The general attitude was the resources that are available could be spent better doing these short-term things. Do not use leased space as a long-term solution. And do not make improvements in one or more facilities or add new ones at the expense of any other existing facility. Don't take from Peter to give Paul a better place is essentially what that's recommending. I think we got one more. Yep. And don't commit to using only currently owned vacant land when considering the location of new facilities. Think a little bit outside of the real estate box. There might be a better solution that might take a change in the real estate holdings of the school district, an exchange, whatever. So, at the very end of this, our formal presentation, we want to again thank the school board for doing this, for allowing us to participate. And again, I want to thank the task force members for showing up, contributing. There's nobody that was in that room that you could use the word bashful on, all right? And it was a very healthy exchange of information and I don't think we would have, as a chair or co-chair, we would have gotten to where we were without the right people being in the room who really care about this school district. So, thank you.
Do you have a question?
I'd like to respond to this and I know there are a couple other task force members who addressed the equity issue and I was at a couple of the sessions listening to that and I was really struck by the intensity of some of the comments is that, let's say we build a new K8 school and we build a K5 replacement for Baird. Let's not, and when you do build new facilities, you can have the modern learning spaces, you can have community spaces for parents, for community partners. It's a lot more difficult in some of our 50 and 60 and 70-year-old buildings. The comment was made by a number of task force members, let's not forget equity when we're dealing with our older buildings. It would not be fair to the students and the parents who attend particularly some of our central city, older schools, to ignore their needs, their need for modern learning spaces, spaces for parent and community groups, and only provide that in some of our newer facilities. So, I would like you, and I know there are a couple other task force members who are very passionate about that, to address that issue.
Sure. Before I blend my nickels worth, anybody on the task force want to make a comment on that?
He said you don't hold that.
Judy.
Judy, if you come to the table. And I know Amy Foot, where's Amy? Amy was really interested in me to come because she was really passionate about that issue as well. So, if you could both come forward and talk about that.
Briefly.
But I think that's really a critical issue.
Why don't you go first?
Sure. Thanks, Mike, calling me out. We did have a lot of, I think, good, healthy discussion about what even the definition of equity is. And I'm also on the Parent Equity and Education Committee through the Equity Department. So, I think there is room to grow in understanding what equity truly means. And so, some of the things that I shared was just a concern over looking at, I mean, a few things, looking at if we are going to propose to build new facilities. To me, where those are located and where those boundaries are is an equity issue because depending on where those facilities are, really hinges on, it could cause harm to other schools. If it allows people with more resources to kind of pull out and that leaves a school even more under-resourced. So, I ask you to really consider looking at where we're looking at schools, placements. We also talked a lot about equity doesn't look like just building a new school and let's not forget about this school and this school and let's just give them a room that's not, you know, equal. That's not equal, but we talked about equity versus equal and the difference between those two words. And I don't know if I'm truly addressing some of the things we talked about, if you want me to share. Was there a certain thing in there that I?
Well, I think, you know, you talked about, I know you're very active at house schools so you know that particularly and your kids also run out of Washington East and those are some of our oldest facilities. And it's much more challenging to do what we've talked about in our older buildings. And I think your point and others is that even though it's more difficult, we can't forget the needs in our older schools.
Yep. I would add to that only to say that I think that the equity issue is primary and very important and it is not just a matter of equitability within the issue of buildings. It is a matter of supporting populations of students in our community and those families and to take that into consideration as you consider the building needs. And that, of course, also applies to boundary changes and we know that from much of the past and we know that we have a very diverse community in school district at this time of our existence and that that is a wonderful thing and that we need to do what we can to benefit all the children of the district. And certainly, the issue of the age of buildings that are outdated in many ways and the overcrowding issues in some schools cannot be avoided. That is essential, that that be addressed. But that the long-term results of what you do with families and students in that regard is really important. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Could you tell me a little bit more? And I understand the importance of an advisory committee's recommendation being mostly made up of top-level stuff, but it's also, I guess, could you give me a little bit more background on some of the areas where people are getting into more of the details because sometimes details can be important, too?
Sure. Let's start with Baird. There were, it was, it came up a lot. The concerns that the facility may be viewed by the public as a relatively new facility and major changes to it may not make sense, so that was discussed quite a bit. The, what else, Ann? Can you think of any other detail that?
Making K through eight at the current Baird site. We talked about.
Sue and Curtis, the committee did not get extremely specific about whether specifically a K through eight at Baird right now in a rebuilt Baird being the way to go, but sticking to the topics?
Yeah. I think maybe a way to look at that is, we didn't have the detailed information and the competency to make specific recommendations regarding a facility like Baird. So, when we had up there fix Baird, we weren't necessarily on the page of how to do it, although there were some suggestions made. But we're not the people to get into the weeds and do the detail. I think Dr. Rodriguez put it best. He said, we're pretty good at doing the what, but you know, we're not so good at doing the how. And he was talking about the task force in that context.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
Do you have, you gave the suggestion that a lot of the task force wanted to extend, wanted to be on the task force following this, to extend this. Did you get the feeling that they wanted to, there was a group that might want to address Baird as a task force and address each individual or just an ongoing task force on all of the needs that were presented on this task force?
My perspective on that is, we didn't, I can't answer that. I certainly wouldn't want to speak for the individuals on the task force, but if you were to go forward and ask folks if you wanted to take a group of concerned folks, people from the task force that have a stake, an immediate stake in that, you might get some people raising their hand.
I can't imagine that if we ended up moving forward with any project, that there wouldn't be some further work to be done by the community, by the specific school, the parents, the staff. I don't think we could move forward without getting some type of involvement.
That's what I thought, but yeah. Thank you.
I have a couple, if I may, and first, thank you again sincerely. I didn't see any mention or discussion about a seven through 12 school. I saw that for K4 through eight, but was there any discussion about seven through 12?
The, I think the context of those conversations was more about the larger issue of overcrowding on the east side. How to address it in terms of what grades, if that's your question. Are at a particular location, there were some thoughts relative to K through eight is nice, but I can't recall anything more specific than that unless there's somebody in the audience who's on the task force.
Well, let me ask you a little differently. Was that ruled out as not being a potentially viable solution, overcrowding, the seven through 12 structure?
Go ahead, Natalie.
When we were discussing, the idea behind having a K8 was due partly to the popularity of K8. of K eights. Red Smith, for an example, was a very popular addition to the school district. The thinking was that by having this at a K eight also, we're dealing with some of the elementary overcrowding, because we have multiple schools at the elementary level at capacity in the heart of Green Bay.
Thank you. Another question I have, something I read in there, and you alluded to in the presentation on boundaries. In the write-up, I believe I had seen where it said, well, you realize there's some difficulty with talking about boundaries, and I think you even alluded to it in your presentation. That said, as you went through it and you talked about boundaries, by any chance did something jump out at you as a possible solution with boundaries anywhere in the district?
I don't recall any specific issues. It was more, put that on the table as a strategy to address overcrowding. And changing boundaries makes the utilization of existing facilities more efficient.
When you talked, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
When you talked about boundaries, was it brought up as a possible viable or non-viable solution to move youngsters from Preble and/or Edison to Franklin, Lombardi and/or West, Southwest?
Wasn't ruled out.
Was it discussed?
Does anybody recall that specific conversation?
Okay.
Yeah, but not in any detail.
Okay. Thank you. And when you said move forward, get going, were you thinking a lot of these things would be done in the referendum in April? Or did the committee have any sense of what might be viable in terms of taking a bite of the apple right now?
The, a couple of times, a comment of this nature came forward, and that is, in the context, we can't do everything at once. Maybe we can, I don't know, you tell us. But if you can't, at least have a plan for, if you will, phase two. And it was said by a couple of people at the table that if the voters knew that it wasn't just a yes or no, black and white on one single issue, because they knew what was happening or proposed to happen in year two, three, and four, they might be more amenable to saying yes next April if there's a referendum. So the context in terms of a master plan and educating the public as to how you might phase this going forward, again, predicated on the if you can't do everything at once. If you can, the numbers that were presented off the cuff in one of the meetings indicated that it would be difficult to do everything at once. So, but you're sitting in your chair for a reason, so.
Well, sadly, the legislature has some sway over us. In any event, am I correct in saying the overriding concern and priority one is the overcrowding, based on the committee?
Clearly.
Okay. Any other questions? On behalf of the board, perhaps Katie would be saying this, sincerely thank you. I know this report will not be mothballed. We were going to do something, and this has helped provide direction.
So, this is a very helpful part, it is part of the process. And we will be continuing, there will be ample opportunity for members of the task force to participate as we continue down this road, because as we get more specific and decide what will actually be addressed and when, we will have community engagement, we will look for more input. So, I am glad to hear that you're more than willing to continue to participate. And again, I appreciate very much what you've done so far. Are there any more questions from the task force? Does anybody want to speak? I'm just wondering if they have anything that wasn't addressed.
Can I vote?
Please do. And if you could speak into the mic, because we are recorded. People do.
Yes. My name is Pat Quinn. And enjoyed being on the task force. It was very, very enlightening in a number of ways. We had an excellent group, and as was mentioned before, a wide variety. The most, I think, effective part of this whole process were the listening sessions, because there we could get the input. And I attended two of the four. And moms and dads, students, grandparents, non-parents, all contributed to the discussions and had very specific answers to the numerous questions that were put out. Now, these weren't just a bunch of people talking off the cuff, because after we all discussed things, then they had to fill out the cards and very specific questions, which I think was an outstanding idea. We tallied those, or at least I did, and I know the group did, the Donovan group did as well. And I found an overriding area of concern to be number one, overcrowding. Number two, equity and education. That was an interesting point, because these were just the average folks out there, and they were, I think, essentially saying, they're getting the feel, knowing that Preble is extremely overcrowded, that the east side has a lot of growth to come, and that's another thing I want to address with you. But I think they were saying, if you're going to do something far east, we want to do something at east and west. And Mike, I think that's one of the comments at the meeting that you picked up on. But having said that, that was encouraging to hear, because we can't forget that the areas that we're serving, it's not just east side and far east side, it's also Bellevue, it's also Scott, it's also far west side. And although there may be some people that are going to say, "Well, we'll just redistrict," and they can be bust, I think that's a despotical for continued growth in your community and your school community. Because your school community and your community itself are tightly bound. And I think that's the true asset of a community, to have schools that are serving the communities where the families are and where the growth is. So I know that was brought out many times. I think that one thing that wasn't presented in the group is the need to consider growth. Much of what we talked about was what we have now at Preble, what we have now at Edison, what we may or may not have at other schools. But I don't think in any of the discussions was it really fine-tuned, because growth can be a nebulous issue. But we do know what's going on in Bellevue just in the last month or so with a multimillion-dollar TIF-approved project to encourage growth in that area. Green Bay Planning and Common Council just approved Grandview Commons, which is a 260-acre planned development on the far east side, just on the other side of Woodside. So when we're considering what we've got to do to solve the problem at Preble, or solve the problem at Edison, that's the tip of the iceberg. Because what's coming down the road, whether it's Scott, or Bellevue, or far east side, is much more than we've considered at this point. And that's for you to consider in your decisions in the future. Having said all of that, I'm glad that it's layered, because we also want to address, by the wishes of the people that were at these meetings, and I think the wishes of the community in general, are to address using some of the space available at east, at west, at southwest. Because those are all people that are going to say yes or no to this. And that's the reality of being in a referendum. And we want to meet the needs of those in all different parts of the city. So. Questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like the opportunity to give us any more information you'd like us to consider? Thank you very much.
We do have some next steps, and Nick Kent from PRA has joined us as well this evening, has used a critical part of the step as well. He's going to be joining us two weeks from now. And some of what Tim and Ann were referring to is that they didn't get into some of the specifics, is because of dollar amounts, let's say, because that's not what they were tasked with. But Nick is now, over the next two weeks, going to be taking this document and then putting it forward with what he would recommend from an architectural and planning standpoint for actual projects and dollar amounts. And then we will have another discussion two weeks from now to be able to kind of further the discussion, and be able to see what that looks like financially, both from the projects as well as what we might possibly be able to afford.
Okay. Just as a follow-up, too, to recognize that the input and the website continues to be alive and well. And if people have further thoughts as they leave tonight, or you have conversations in the community and you want the board to have more information that maybe hasn't been brought forward, that's welcome. So everything that people post or bring forward, or if you're, well, we've had folks that may not be comfortable posting but want to call in and say, "How do I get this information to the Board of Education?" We can make that happen as well. So, we still, if there's any other thoughts or reflections that people want to share that haven't come forward, that avenue is available. I just want to make sure people are aware that the board wants every piece of information that people would like to share. I just want to make one comment. I'm really glad that you gave us a list of items not to do, what you wanted us not to do. That makes it very clear what you have in your head, what you're really thinking to move forward. And I'm really glad that was added to this. Any other?
We are ready to move on, but actually, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Do you have much, Mr. Sarno, on budget?
Yes. Yes. We're going to take a five-minute break. If board members want to commiserate with some of the task force members, it gives me a chance to talk to them again.
A nice 15-minute, five-minute break?
We like when you're in charge.
Who's in charge? All right. And now, Chris?
I do. I've got two documents. I've got a Google Slides show that I wanted to share with you, and then as well, I've got a Google Sheet, which is...
You don't have that on our...
Do we have that?
You do not have that, so we'll take a look at the screen. I apologize. As big as they can make those. There we go. Wanted to share a little bit of information with you. So, we've had some internal discussions, and I shared a week ago, kind of where we're at is that we've had a couple of meetings now internally. I think the table might have been a little bit bigger, and it was just as full. We've had a fair amount of folks engaged in the discussion. Just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on where we're at. In fact, there's some things, some uncertainties, as I might call them, that will be uncertain for quite some time, and at the same time, I think there's going to be even some things that might be even timely or time-sensitive in that respect. So just a little bit of an update. So, we've begun our 2017-18 budget planning process. Why? There's a lot of uncertainty, there's a large financial impact. We're talking big money here, millions of dollars, and we need to make sure that we have that as planned out as possible. There's some deadlines and timelines that impose obstacles. We need to make sure that we're aware of those, and not just aware of them, but have not a proper planning and implementation process for that. And as well, this is probably the most important piece, if not just to make sure that we maintain our financial stability, is that our spending aligns with our four district priorities of academic excellence, personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce. That's what we're working for. As we're looking through this budget, that's crucial towards the success of our students. I have four scenarios that I'm going to present, and that's that other document that I indicated. Four scenarios, it's a planning document. I've broken them into four scenarios, but there could technically be infinite, because these are just four situations that, as we've kind of broken down some different possibilities, it's really to see what's possible or what's probable and plan for it, as I indicated, to understand it and then have that action plan to be able to implement it. So I'm going to come, oh, let me pop those up one more time. I think I'm right at the end of my mouse's. There's a stipend, we've been living on a stipend last year, and this year is a part of the state budget. We didn't receive an increase in the revenue limit, but with the next biennial budget, what if that stipend goes away? And that's possible, or for that matter, probable. And for that matter, there hasn't been an increase in the revenue limit, and I'll show you the last five or six years' history of the revenue limit. What if there's no increase? In the way that the state's talking, and I know that we've had discussion at this table about that, not seeing a whole lot of new money, how is there going to be an increase in the revenue limit? Some of that's funded by the state, but some of that is then funded by the district as well through taxation. Scenario two, what happens if that stipend stays? And again, that stipend, it's five and a half million dollars. What if, for some reason, the state is able to continue that? And that's what this looks at as the second scenario, versus then still no increase in the revenue limit. Scenario three, stipend stays, that five and a half million dollar stays, and somehow, and I'm not too terribly optimistic on this, but a hundred dollar increase in the revenue limit. Again, the state potentially having to fund some of that, but primarily on the district's responsibility that would then impact taxes. Fourth scenario, and I want to use the term vehicle a little bit loosely, but what if that stipend, that five and a half million dollars goes away, but primarily focused here on some type of access to an increase in the revenue limit? How could that happen? Through legislation, part of the biennial budget, or an operational referendum? So that's what we're looking at in the fourth scenario. So I'm going to come back here, and I want to switch over to the four different scenarios. And I apologize, it's fairly small. I'm going to see if I can't make it just a little bit bigger. It's not working with me. There we go. Okay. So scenario one, I want to have a scenario for inactivity. As we have this, we have a starting or a beginning balance, and I want to explain this a little bit. We're utilizing our Fund 38 fund balance at this point in time. We're using $6 million, and that does change for next year. But essentially, where we have a balanced general fund, we're still utilizing our Fund 38. And so I'm counting this as a negative balance at this point in time. And what each of these columns does then is, it takes any changes in revenues, and again, these are big dollars, but changes in revenues and changes in expenditures, increases and decreases in both. And we've identified some categories. And what I wanted to do is be able to take a look at what this looks like through these four different scenarios, and map that out a little bit to have that understanding. So as an example, in this first scenario, the stipend goes away, no increase in the revenue limit. So this increase in the revenue limit is zero, and again, this is a revenue change. We are still experiencing a little bit of an increase in our student, who those we're able to count, our membership, and we're able to increase our revenue by an estimate of about $1.4 million. This is that stipend going away. So it's a large decrease in our revenues. As we start coming down again, I want to take a look at big buckets. So, ESEA and IDEA, so title and special ed activity, those are things where our allocations, if they change, let's say ESEA goes up by half a million dollars, our title funding goes up, that would be an increase in revenue, and we might be able to utilize those monies. At this point in time, I don't see any change that would drastically impact our budget. I want to keep them on the table. This is that Fund 38 transfer from our general fund into Fund 38. It's going from $6 million, or it's decreasing by $4 million. So this beginning balance, that's actually a positive thing. So that's changing by $4 million, it helps us out. So that's a decrease in expenditures. Here's where we're going to start getting into some interesting things, because as I take a look at historically, over the last several years, steps in lanes for all eligible staff, that's historically here been about a $2 million increase in expenditures. We have a CPI increase, and this coming year is about 1.15%. Keep coming, buddy. That's about a $2 million expense. So as you see this ending financial scenario start to climb a little because we're adding these expenditures. An estimated additional staffing needs based on those of students that we're educating now, because it's a changing demographic, that's about a $2 million annual expense. The benefit increase, and this is tied to some of those other salaries and whatnot or increases that we have in the Wisconsin retirement or other benefits, is about $1.2 million annually. I'm waiting for it to catch up here. Grace, do you mind if I move just a little bit closer? Sitting here on Friday doing the same thing, and it was working, so... Okay. So that's a $1.2 million expense. We're up to 16.8. Another one of these big buckets, workers' comp. So this is where we're essentially, at this point, self-insured. It's a $1.5 million expense this year. It's all based on our history. There's a mod rating, depending on injuries and whatnot, and the costs associated with those injuries. Was told this year it could be anywhere from a million to $2 million, literally a million dollar, doubling the cost based on our historical trend. So I've budgeted a million and a half this year. It could be worse. It could be a little bit better. But I wanted to identify it, again, as a potential change, because as this year wraps up, what would next year's workers' comp look like? So right now, I'm just leaving it. I've got it identified, but it is something that we need to be aware of. On average, we've got an additional $1.3 million of open enrollment out students. That's those 150 students said it's been increasing the last several years. We need to budget for that in case the trend continues. I've got a contingency of about $1 million, and I apologize for this, but literally just in case we've kind of missed anything, in case anything new comes up, just to be a little bit safe, it's common in the construction process, I wanted to make sure that we identified that. Another big bucket is that as we wrapped from '14-'15 into '15-'16, we deferred expenses, we made reductions. As we went from '16-'17 into '17-'18, we again made deferred and cuts. I don't have a number on this. I know it exceeds $5 million. I wouldn't -- I'd feel a little uncomfortable going significantly higher than that, but it's probably about a $5 to $7 million expense, as we deferred expenses to be able to make sure that we met this year's budget. Even putting in a $5 million, and again, you'll see that all these numbers that I have, they've carried over the additional scenarios. But just on scenario one, with that $5.5 million going away... Can I steal this? Can you guys hear me okay? All right. Oh, that's okay. We're up to about a $21.8 million deficit next year. No real new revenues going away, in fact, quite a bit going away, in expenses that we've historically seen. Okay? Scenario two, and I'm going to come up a little bit, is that we continue to see that $1.4 million. This is where the stipend stays, but no increase in the revenue limit. That $1.4 million stays because we get additional students to count, but so stays, and I haven't decreased anything, because it stays as $5.5 million. We don't have to reduce that. But all other situations here with the staffing and whatnot have remained the same. And again, a little bit probably on the light side, but I'm kind of comfortable with this, is that we're at an $18.1 million deficit for next year. I'm not too terribly optimistic about this, but that stipend stays, which is why we don't see a decrease here of $5.5 million. And the state says we can come up with allowing districts to get an extra $100 in the revenue limit. And so that's this $2.2 million is $100 multiplied by our approximately 22,000 membership students that we're able to count. That's $2.2 million, so new revenues. We still have the same expenditure changes that we've had in the past. We're at a $15.9 million deficit. Now, this last scenario is what I wanted to work on, is I'm going to flip back over here. This is that scenario four, is that let's say we're allowed some type of vehicle, some type of access to an increase in the revenue limit, whether it was through the state's doing or through ours. So I'm going to flip back just a little bit. Is that the thing that is changing here is that this revenue limit, and I haven't created a separate line, because it would be considered through the revenue limit, whether it was the state imposing something allowable or the district taking it upon ourselves to do something. But I've identified something here, and what does that look like? Because as we're moving forward, we'll talk a little bit here in a couple minutes about what our capacity is for our levy, much like we've talked about for a little bit over a year now. But even putting something in for some type of operational levy of $15 million, we're still potentially in the hole by $8.6 million. Now, I want to explain that just a little bit, specific to the operational levy. We're going to talk a little bit about some history. Let me get over to the presentation. So that's the four different scenarios. This is our revenue limit history, our actual revenue limit. This number changed by district, because it was a dollar amount based on where they're at, but for us, that was a decrease. But for the last several years, we saw a $50 increase, a 75-75. The last two years in the revenue limit, we saw the stipend, but no increase in the revenue limit, and we don't know what's going to happen for 2017-18. So that's an uncertainty at this point in time. I want to take a look at kind of a what-if situation, is that this is those same revenue limits, and then in blue, you'll still see the 50-75-75-00. But I threw down what it would have looked like if we would have been allowed just the CPI those same years. So the CPI, the same amounts that we're probably negotiating with our staff, what was allowable or viewed as kind of a commonly accepted number, that amount over those same years, rather than getting $50, it would have been 290. I know that it would have only been $11.47 this last year because the CPI was so low, but taking a look at an estimate for 2017-18 would have been $110 for next year. Why is that important? Because this increase, what could have happened that didn't happen, we're a low-spending district, and I've shared this, and I hope you guys are aware of that. What would it look like if things were a little bit different? So that previous slide, that CPI, all of those yellow bars that we looked at, translated over the last several years, $692.74, multiplied by our 21,980 students, that's 15.22 million that we would have access to at this point in time. It's a big if, because it didn't happen, but let's be aware of that. We've got a base comparison, and what this is, is taking a base revenue limit, what the state allows without any exemptions. Ours in 2014-15, is that correct, Michelle? 14-15?
I believe so.
Thank you. Was $9,407. The state average was $9,885. It translates to $12.5 million. The state average with our shared costs, and this is where we have a lot more expenses that are included, but it's another measurable point, our shared cost is $6,991. The state average was $10,444, so $753 additional dollars multiplied by our 21,980 students, 16.55 million. So I'm going to wait for Google. There we go. On average, for these comparisons, just these three different scenarios, is 14.78 million. I'm going to round up and say 15, which is why, as I took a look at these different scenarios, why I put in this $15 million figure in that yellow shaded. And that still leaves us with an $8.6 million deficit for next year. So increases in expenditures or changes in expenditures and potential decreases in revenues, that's where we're at at this point in time. So I'm trying to get over. There we go. So what can we afford? And I want to talk about this a little bit, because we had a discussion last Monday. So revenue limits control how much money we have access to. The state controls that, or we ask for a referendum, either for construction or operational, but that's when we ask for the ability to garner additional monies. I want to take a -- and I've shared this before, so this should not be new. It's been updated, because the last time I shared it, I think it was March or April. But taking a look at our levy, this is the dollar amount, and what this does, this graphical representation of the actual dollars, it maintains our flat mill rate at $10.16 over the next six years. And also, what I've included, and I've lumped it together, is potential referendum money. That's the purple. And as you can see, over the next six years, that continues to grow. We've been utilizing the energy efficiency exemption over the last couple of years, but this is what that capacity is for either construction, operational, or both, for the foreseeable future. If I get much further beyond this, it's difficult to understand. This might drastically change, depending on what the state does and whatnot. This is fairly conservative. But it takes a look, and what this is, is this dollar amount in purple over the next six years is $148 million. We could draw a comparison, I could break it out, and we could take that $15 million from that operational. And that's not 15 forever, because that gets built into the state, starts to fund some of that. But this is essentially $148 million over the next six years, to maintain, again, a flat mill rate, a flat taxation rate.
Help me understand that.
Please.
Are you saying with this graph that we have a referendum every year?
No, this is if the board ended up acting here in April, which having a resolution passed by January 24th, to say, "Yep, let's go to a referendum," and then in April, the community passes that. This is the capacity that we have, where we could levy money in the purple annually without increasing taxes.
But the purple is, would be a referendum...
That's what I'd recommend. Yep.
Okay. And, but it looks to me like you're -- if you didn't have an additional referendum every year, the purple would be going down, wouldn't it?
That's correct.
So you're having with this scenario a referendum every year?
No. What this is, is pretend that we work with RW Baird. Mike Clark comes, we take a look at what an $80 million referendum looks like for construction, and $10 million or $15 million operational referendum. Piecing those two together, it's not a referendum every year. In an operational referendum, you can ask for a certain number of years, or you can ask for that to be recurring. And then what it also includes is for construction, the levy is the actual debt repayment. So you would say, "We want a certain dollar amount," and that would be repaid over a certain period of time. And so that's what this represents, is those repayments.
Andy, are you ready to recommend, or you want to talk to Mike Clark first on recurring or non-recurring operational referendum?
Yeah, would like to. I think we should have some internal discussions as well as speak with Baird. And the reason that I would recommend that is that, you know, it's the business that they're in, they keep track of a lot of that. I think they've got some data that we could get access to, to help guide.
I think one of the pieces that we talked about on the slide where we talked about the state average, that's the conversation we've been having in the greater community. And there's great interest. Unfortunately, we won't know where the legislature is at until well after April and looking at the greater picture. So I do believe, well, Tony Evers has presented a step to that, a two-step process to get to the state average in his proposal, but I know that there is interest and there are conversations around getting the Brown County schools to the state average. And they're using that second number, which is 16.5 million.
I'm trying to get up there.
So one of the conversations that we've talked about, and obviously, we're going to need to trim some things, there's no question about that, but it's the second, the state average shared cost is the data that's being used by the different districts and the CHaver rate and all those conversations. I think that the piece, that there's a recognition that the state needs to really look at the funding formula around equity. Right now, our reimbursements for some of the students that we serve is extremely low, 8.2% for our ELL kids, as that number continues to grow. You saw that number where there's additional staffing. The additional staffing is during the school year, after we pretty much staffed in the spring. So for example, we had how many hundred children join us this fall through the summer months? So getting, trying to address those needs. It says we have high-needs students come in to our different schools and need a different, you know, today, we talked about a situation where we need more parent support, those kinds of things, as our needs shift. But I also think that the other piece that we run in sometimes tight spots is really making sure that our class sizes are within that framework. And some of our schools, when they're running one or two sections of a grade level and they start to tip, then the question is, do you add another FTE? And there's really no other teacher. There's really little that can be done, other than add that teacher. So that some of our class sizes are very, very small, even with great management, because we want to be within the board guidelines for class size. But at the same time, you know, some are creeping up. So we're trying to balance all that very discreetly, really looking every single week at what positions we're filling. But it's been a lot of additional pieces to address the needs and the numbers of interpreters and some of those pieces to make sure that our kids are being successful in the best way we know how. That's a piece of it. I think the other piece is recognizing that each year, there have been some shifts in things in the dollars, and you could see that in the long-term picture since 2010-11.
Well, the governor's budget comes out in February, but that's too late to influence an April referendum. By that time, we will have had to decide what we want to put on the ballot. We can't wait until the governor's budget comes out, because then we can't get it on the ballot.
Andy, could you go back to the bar chart, please?
First one, this one?
No, the referendum, the purple referendum money. That one.
Thank you.
Okay. So what does '23-'24 look like?
Very similar. From there out, you know, and that light blue is our operational piece.
Okay.
You can see in '16-'17 why the blue dropped, is that the state, we received that additional $10, $11 million of state funding, state aid. But moving out further, it, I mean, you can see the trend of what's going. I really don't, it's like predicting birth rates.
Okay. But now, it's a possible referendum, but possibly plural levy. If there was one referendum in April, how far out would that purple extend?
That's really dependent on what it is.
Okay.
If, as I indicated...
How many years are we attached to it?
Exactly.
Right.
That debt repayment, and that's why, as we take a look at the facilities task force, I hope it's okay, you know, I'll use Rip and Tom's former district, is that they went out for a referendum, and they're taking out a 20-year debt issue, because that's what they do. That's what districts do, is they're maximizing that 20-year debt issue. They might have a period where they drop off a little bit, that they're anticipating they might need to go to referendum again here 10, 15 years from now. But Beaver Dam, a former district, they went to referendum in $68 million, I think, and I know that they're pretty much maximizing that debt issue at 20 years. They have other debt that's falling off, and they're looking at a 20-year debt issue. We're looking at a fairly large dollar amount, again, over six years, it's $148 million of potential referendum, whether it's through construction or operational, but that's a large dollar amount. So even without looking at, you know, I could give you a breakout of what that might look like, but we're not looking at a 20-year debt issue. Give you an example, the largest referendum passed to date, I think somebody corrected me and said there might be one now for $100 million, but a couple failed at '99, one at '98, and then one passed at $96 or $98 million.
Okay.
If we took all of this money and put it towards construction, we could pay that off in six years. We could have the largest referendum passed ever in the state and pay that off in six years, less than six years. It's not necessarily wise, because I don't think a $100 million referendum would pass. It's possible, very, it's possible. But, so as we take a look, to answer your question a little bit more, that purple, that possible amount for a construction or operational, that continues.
Okay.
That doesn't go away. It's not like all of a sudden in 2023-24, that all of a sudden, something creeps up and that completely disappears.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does, but yeah, for now, it does.
Okay.
And just also, you know, some of the, we talked briefly about it the last time, too. In order to get to the state average, just in the per pupil, yeah, state average shared cost... cost, in the, in the conversations with Baird and, and with others, and I know other, other, others have talked about this as well, to go out and say, we would like to get to the state average, but if the state gives us something, would you have to then levy that?
Yeah.
That difference? So for example, let's say the state does come through and we get half of it, for example, then, then could you do that?
Yeah.
You know, still knowing we're probably going to have to cut eight, but still to use that as a target figure.
Yep. I presented that question to our legal counsel, Corals and Brady, and I said, Allison, do, do they allow that? Can you say, we're here, we want to get up to here, and if the state gives us nothing, that's what the referendum is, is to get us this much money. But if the state ended up giving us this, that's all we get is the difference between the two. And she said, I don't think it's been done, but you could probably do something, and it's all about the wording of the question. So that, that is possible.
I guess I, you know, I, I think there's a, I think there's a pretty strong case here to, you know, to do something as we get more details over the next two weeks, but I, I don't necess, I, I mean, I would support an amount that's reasonable without going too far off the beaten path to try to craft something that triggers, you know, triggers a changing, it just seems very, it seems very confusing as compared to looking at a realistic scenario and, you know, if we go, if, if we find that we're over, somehow end up with more money than we need to run the district, there certainly are other avenues. Other debt can be paid off faster, or we could do some new construction without, you know, I mean, there's, I'd rather see that than be the first district to craft a referendum saying, do the voters approve X money if it's not to exceed X percent over the state? You know, I would just rather keep it, have a reasonable amount, keep it simple, and just do it, do it that way while amortizing construction costs over a longer period of time as justified by the longer length of the lifespan of the structures. I certainly support doing both. I just don't want to make it get more, more complicated than it needs to be. It might hurt rather than help.
I would agree with Mr. Becker. Also with that, I wouldn't want to try to sell it saying, you know, should the state come through, then we won't use this money, won't need this money. I, I think that would be a fundamental mistake if we choose to do that, or position to do that, fine, but not to make that promise.
The other consideration, too, is that if the state allows for an increase, 200, 300, let's say, that goes to everybody and therefore the state average moves, we potentially threw some money away if we say we only want to get to the state average because that's a moving target. So something to understand as well, but. We're, we're planning, we're taking a look, we're making sure that we understand the situation that's in front of us. There's some large uncertainties, both revenues and expenditures. We want to make sure that we plan accordingly. The state, and I shared this last week, the state and our timeline and deadlines, because we do have some deadlines, they don't match. As you can, Mike indicated, the, the budget doesn't come out at a time that it could actually help us craft something. Even taking a look at language for staffing and stuff like that doesn't help us necessarily. But the last piece, and I mean, this goes back to the, the district's priorities, is that programs and services to students are going to be impacted. So as we take a look at this, it's going to be difficult with the amount of money that we're talking about without impacting something, so. Is there questions that you have? Any other further discussion?
I guess I'd like to go through here what you're going to be bringing back in two weeks.
In two weeks? I don't know if I'm going to be bringing anything specific back at this point in time. I don't have anything crafted as a next step. I know that as we look to January, I think we have to have something because if there were to be an operational referendum, if there were to be, we would need to make sure that we had allowed for time to look at that and then allow for the approval of that. So maybe I answered my own question, is that the next logical step is that we have to bring something forward here in two weeks?
Yes, you alluded to, it's basically two-pronged, operational, but also should we do something with facilities and how those two balance out?
You and Nick will have something more specific on facilities in two weeks. So Nick is putting costs to the K8, K5, you know, some of those specifics, he will be putting costs to those, and then that will help us to start crafting an April referendum by January.
Correct. That's correct, yeah. So Nick is going to be working on the solutions that were presented tonight, assigning dollar amounts.
Yeah.
Prioritization will need to still occur, but then piecing that together then with, I guess, other variables, absolutely, yep.
You may have just said it, but say it again for me. When's the drop dead date to have things done to say whether or not we're going to referendum?
This year is January 24th.
I'm sure when?
January 24th is this year for an April referendum. We've got meetings on the 9th and the 16th.
Well, we have a lot done, but we have a lot to do yet, huh?
Yeah.
At least on our part.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it? Anything else? Thank you. Mr. Marsh, do you have any exciting news for us?
I do not, not at this time.
Bless you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to read a notice. We do have a closed session. Special Board meeting, closed session, has been scheduled for Monday, December 5th, 2016, immediately following the adjournment of the work session meetings, which begin at 5:30 PM at the Green Bay Area Public Schools District Office Building, 2200 South Broadway, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54303, room 337 pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pren.1, Pren. C. Concerning employment, promotion, compensation, performance, evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pren.1, Pren. F. Concerning financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons where except where par, Pren. B, applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely be a substantial adverse effect on, upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. To it personnel matters pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pren.1, Pren. E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit negotiation of collective bargaining agreements pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pren.1, Pren. C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, performance, evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit employee compensation. The meeting will begin an open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session so provided by law.
So move a second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Hi.
Lecha?
Hi.
Doris?
Hi.
Janch?
Hi.
Lomani?
Aye.
Whitehead?
Aye.
We moved closed session. Cast six.